Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, October 22, 2018. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to let anyone know in the audience who may want to speak to the one item on the agenda tonight. We only have one item on our Committee of the Whole agenda tonight. To kindly fill out a speaker request form, they're in the back of the room, give those to our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas, who will get them to me and will make sure that you are part and parcel of our agenda this evening. Having said that, I'd like to call our roll call and ask Lynn to do that for us, please.
Jacobson.
Finnouken.
Here.
Marquart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Norreco.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. I have no speaker request forms, so I am going to assume that at this point there is no public participation, so I would like to indicate that our one consideration tonight is the VeoRide Bike Sharing Program update. And to introduce that item is our Public Works Director, Tim Holdeman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, and residents of the City of DeKalb. Tonight, we bring forward to you a discussion with regard to the community/university collaborative agreement on the bike sharing program. The purpose for our discussion tonight is to receive feedback from City Council and our residents regarding the program, regarding any suggestions for changes you may have for going forward to improve the program. A presentation tonight will begin with a brief outline of what is in your agenda memorandum, and then I'll turn it over to the VeoRide representative, which will talk a little bit about the results of this initial trial period, talk a little bit about the lessons learned, and set forward a program for improving the bike sharing program. The objective of the bike sharing program is to provide a cost-effective means for students and residents to have transportation in and around the campus and into the downtown area. Our contractor is VeoRide, and they were selected last year through a process that included interviewing three vendors. The other two were Zagster and Limebike. And the selection committee selected VeoRide because their approach was very measured and systematic. It was an incremental rollout. It wasn't just dumping the bikes and then seeing how it went. So that was one of the things that the selection team really liked about their approach. And so that's why we're here today, is to kind of take an inventory of that first three or four months of the program and to get your feedback and ideas about improvement. The VeoRide program includes or uses a dockless bike sharing model. And as the name implies, it doesn't have a docking station or a central location for the bicycles. So they're used and they're left where the end of the ride is, so to speak. One of the advantages of the dockless system is that there's no upfront cost. So we have nothing invested in this program as a city in terms of the upfront cost. As I mentioned, riders use a smartphone app to identify where the bike is and then to unlock it. And then, once they're done with their ride, they leave it at their terminus of their travel. And then it's available for the next rider. The trial period began in April, and it included 100 bikes. And it was limited to the area shown in blue on the map on the slide that's up now. Essentially, the NIU campus area. In August, the area was expanded to include the area identified in red, which is includes Antiglade North, east to Normal, and down to Hillcrest, and then also the Elwood neighborhood, including First and Lincolnway, Lincoln Highway. It was expanded to 233 bikes in August, and that's where we are today. So some of the challenges that we've had along the way is bikes are where they're not supposed to be. Riders leave them on bike paths in the middle of the sidewalk, or they get tipped over. And so there has to be a constant gathering up of those and correcting those bicycles, which requires having boots on the ground. And VeoRide has several employees, but there's been some turnover in this trial period, which has resulted in some delays in terms of getting the bikes picked up and straightened There has been very little vandalism, per se, although the Park District did note that they retrieved one from the Kishwaki River during their Clean the Kish event. But overall, there has not been a lot of vandalism. So as we move forward, if we want to formalize our agreement with VeoRide, we're suggesting that that agreement would be in the form of a license, a limited right-of-way license. And that license would be specific in terms of the location of the bikes, the number of bikes, and if there were any other limitations on the program. It would be subject to renewal, and it could be revoked. There's some of the other ideas that we're thinking about in the agreement would be to require a nuisance bond that would be available if we had to go out and retrieve any bikes. It would cover the city staff time in doing that. So we do have a draft agreement that we've been working on. Like I said, it is a limited right-of-way license. So at this time, that concludes my introductory remarks. I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, our VeoRide representative is here and will be giving a presentation. Also, we'd like to welcome John Heckman from NIU, who is also participating as our partner in this program. And I'm sure John would speak to any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Tim. I'd certainly entertain any questions from council at this point. However, given that our VeoRide representative is here and John Heckman is here from the university, it might be more appropriate to hear their presentations, after which we can ply them with questions, so to speak. Is that something that seems to make sense to the council? If so, then if you would introduce our guests, and we'll let them make their presentations.
Yeah, so our guest today is Candace Zui, and she's the Business Development Partner of VeoRide. And she'll be here to talk a little bit about lessons learned and where we go from here.
Good. Yeah, thank Candace, you've been with us before.
Yes.
Yes, please, welcome.
Thank you, Tim. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and residents of DeKalb. My name's Candace. I'm VP of Business Development of VeoRide. It's my pleasure to be here today to share the program's updates and lesson learned in the past four months and the game plan to move forward, to ensure we have a successful program going forward. So let's take a look at the slides then. So in summary, I will say the outcome of the bike share program is very inspiring, which can be supported by our matrix in a bit. And what I want to go first is like the items of VeoRide team has been working forward, working with in the past four months. Since the program started at the end of April, since the contract was signed with a university only, so a lot of our activities, events held was on NIU campus. So we collaborate with multiple departments, which has parking, PR, social media team, student orientation, athletics, convocation center, et cetera. So, and we participate the major like student events, presence picnic, student orientation in order to promote program, to do the riders' education. And then we give promotions to the student group at the beginning of the program and also at the beginning of the semester. For example, we give out like one month's free riding time for all the students and residents who want to try out the program. And also, at this, at the end of, at the beginning of this semester, we also get like 80%, 20% discount for our annual membership for those who want to commit to the bike share program and use it as a tool for the daily commute. So this is pretty successful among students. And we also send out regular monthly riders' education email to our riders who register their email in our app to remind them to be a good citizens, to park the bike responsibly, to use the bike properly. And the other thing is that we, the team, is located here in DeKalb, and we constantly address the concerns, feedbacks, like through the channel we receive from customer service line, which is a 800 number, and our in-app reports, and also email, and then website. And we monitor the usage of the VeoRide app and VeoRide bike, and we optimize our operation plan, like in the last four months. For the City of DeKalb, since the agreement hasn't been finalized, so we have limited present here, but we still try our best to make sure we sponsor, be a good neighbor and be a good business partner here. So one event we participated in is DeKalb hike and bike event back in May, and we also is a trail sponsor for event as well. Moving forward, I would like to share some matrix and how the program performed. So overall, we have almost like 30,000 rides since the end of April. And at the beginning of like nearly one month of this fall semester, we are hitting almost 14,000 rides, which equals to three rides per day, per bike, which is amazing. I think here we have pretty good ridership, good rider excitement, but what we need to do is to encourage riders to how to ride it, like and park it responsibly. And right now, as you can see, we have almost 3,000 active riders in the program. And right now, as for today, we have total of 233 bikes in operation. So going forward, since the bike is equipped with the GPS tracking system, we can utilize the data we gather to analyze where we can put more bike rack and by analyzing people's dropping and picking up behavior. As you can see in the map here, the red zone representing 90% of the pickup and drop-off area, which happening on campus. And the orange, orange like color represent like 15% of the drop-off and pickup behavior, and the rest of the green area representing 5%. So with this, we can analyze where we can put more bike racks on to satisfy our riders' needs. And next, it's our heat map for our riding paths. As you can see, very excitingly, you can see like 95% of the ride taking place on campus, and I would say like 90% of the rides is like commuting rides. It happens on campus, and it happens between the north part of the apartment complex and the campus. And we also find pretty interesting for like 10% of the rides happening for recreational purpose. And as you can see, the Kishwaki River Trail is pretty popular for the recreation purpose. And this map can indicate for the city where we should put more bike lanes to, for our riders to meet their different purpose of the riding. Moving forward, this is our VeoRide team summary. So from May to August, we have 100 bikes in operation, and we did a survey to the students. A lot of students, they're requesting more bikes because we have a good, like large footprint like on campus, and the campus is pretty dispersed. And then the parking facility is pretty far away from where they live and where they take classes. So we talked with the university parking and service department and agreed to increase the bike to 233. So as you can see, the red, the green bar, the dark green bar, representing how many like concerns we received from different channels, from our app, from the customer service line, email, and website. 95% of the concern coming from our app, which comes from our riders to report the question, the concerns they have. And then we send out our crew, which is indicated in the tail bar, to address those questions. So in the past several months, average, we receive five reports every day, and we send out our team to address it accordingly. So we have very inspiring number, but there is something we need to do more. So as you can see, we have five lessons learned, which is good thing as well. That means we have more work to do and to make sure we can be a good partner and make sure we meet the needs for the riders as well as the community as well. So the first thing, first item we noticed is that we have some improper parking behavior. So bike are left like not at the bike rack, and bike might left like in the middle of sidewalk, in the park, or the bike was tipped down by either wind or by people. So that's like improper parking behavior we notice. And the second is that we geofenced the service area to be NIU campus only, but we noticed that a lot of students, they leave like north side of the campus. So they travel a lot from the campus to the north side of the apartment, and they complain a lot, like they're not able to like end their trip in the north side of the campus. So that's one of the issue we receive. Another issue, another complaint we receive is that riders said there's no enough parking at some stores, like their favorite store, McDonald's, Starbucks, or in the Lincoln Highway. And DeKalb actually have a pretty amazing park system, and there's fewer bike rack they can find, which is pretty disappointing to our riders as well. And the fourth thing is that since the contract was signed between VeoRide and the university, and we did a lot of promotion like on campus, so a lot of residents, they feel left, left out of the program, and they have very few information about the program. So they have a lot of question when they're, they saw like a bike being left in like downtown. They have no idea what this bike is for, and why do you have red bike showing up in my community like every other days? So that's one thing. And the very last thing is that I think bike share program, the main goal for us is to bring more people who are not like frequent rider into cycling world, and not to use car for daily commute to reduce our carbon footprint. So that comes with issue as well, because a lot of like riders, since they're not frequent riders, one problem encounter, they don't know where they can park the bike to. Because they're not frequent rider, they don't know where are the racks are. So a lot of riders, they have trouble finding the bike rack, even though sometimes the bike rack may be several feet away, just right behind them. They still leave the bike at the closest place they can find. So that's another issue we find. So based on that lesson learned, we also come out a game plan with the public works and also the university. So the first item we want to address is that we would like to add the bike rack location in the app to address the issue, the riders doesn't know where they can park the bike. So the first step is that we'll utilize the campus interaction app. Like it has all the bike racks location, and we'll add those to our VeoRide app. The next step, we'll work with the public work and get to know where are the bike racks in the approved area we operate. So the next item is that since a lot of people, they complain about there's not enough biking infrastructure in place, and we also have good data indication to tell us where we can put more bikes at. So the next step for us is that we will analyze the heat map, compare with the existing biking infrastructure, to make recommendation and analyze where are the most popular pickup and drop-off location doesn't have a bike rack. And next, we will help the city and university to add either signage or painted area for indication to let the riders park the bike, not like in the middle of the sidewalk, but also for their needs. The other item is that we propose to communicate more with our local business partners, city department, student groups, through different channel, through like in-person meeting or email communication or different source. One thing we do find out is that since a lot of bikes showing up in the northern part of campus in apartment complex, we do like have communication with those apartment, trying to figure out a solution to make sure people park the bike correctly. And one thing, one magical thing we find out that one apartment building, we purchased a bike rack there, and then all of the sudden, all the bikes parked upright perfectly at the location. So I think we just need some indication or encouragement for our riders to let them to understand where they can park the bike, where they can like, how they can do to be a responsive residents here in DeKalb. So another thing, as we mentioned, a lot of residents, they feel like they are left off. So the next item I think we'll do is to attend like events or meetings with the local residents to make sure they are in the loop. And this is also a great resource they can utilize to do their daily commute or recreation purpose. And also, VeoRide, we have different like resources or platform that our riders can, or non-writers, residents, they can report issue. Through like website, there is a report form in the website, and email, or our customer service line. So even though you're not a user, if you see there is a bike, give a call to us or send us an email. In that case, we can, we are able to address it ASAP, not like letting it sit there for another hours, because our operation has schedule. We have like different zones to be swept every day. So the one item we need to communication out is we have multiple communication channel for our residents to reach out to us. We are not like in responsible company. We are pretty prompt to resolve all the issues, but at the circumstances that we need to know where, what happened. So the last two items are more addressing the improper parking behavior. One thing we are going to, and we are doing right now, is that we will communicate with misbehaved riders at the end of each business day. That means if you are the person who parked the bike like in the middle of sidewalk, and our operation team caught the bike, and our operation team will record the bike number, chase down the last riding person, and at the end of the business day, we'll send out notification to this rider to say, hey, here's the proof, here is how you parked the bike, and it's not ideal for the community, please return the bike to the nearest bike rack, like every day. So if this person, we find out is a repetitive person who do that, we will suspend their account for one month or two months. So we can communicate with them until they have, they promise they will be a good citizen again, we'll unfreeze their account to use our service again. The next item is that we'll add an extra step for our riders to like end their trip. So before, 99% of our riders have smartphone. So what we suggest our riders to opt-in is that before you end your trip, take a picture of your bike, provide us the evidence, you are a good citizens, you parked correctly at the bike rack, and then part, and then end the trip. So in that case, like everyone is thinking about, oh, I need to take a picture. I may better to directly pull the bike back to the bike rack in case to, just to avoid like further charge, or to avoid like suspension of my account. So these two items do help to reduce a lot of like inresponsive parking behavior. So in summary, I think we have very inspiration number and very exciting number as well, and I think a lot of people, they're on board with the program. And also, we do see a lot of challenges, and we come up a good plan to work on, and like it's our responsibility to make sure the program is a success in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Before we have any questions or comments, John, would you prefer to make a few comments now? John Heckman, Director of Facilities, is that correct, John?
Yes, sir, that's close enough.
At Northern Illinois, and welcome.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I really didn't have any prepared remarks, but I'll take the opportunity to illustrate and maybe emphasize the university's partnership that we want to have with this program. We, as much as the city, want this program to work. We've seen utilization rates, I'm encouraged by that, and want to see the students have an option other than driving vehicles around our community, and so that's a very positive aspect. We like the idea of this program because it has flexibility. Unlike docking-based bicycle share programs, you're kind of, you're setting the destination to, you know, certain locations. This program has that flexibility for riders to go where they want to, wherever that might be in the community, and I think that's a very positive aspect. And then lastly, we very much like the cost effectiveness of the program. No upfront investment by either parties, university or the city. The company takes the risk of how to implement that program, and that's very attractive to us as well. We do want this to work, though. I share the same concerns of what others have noticed with the bikes being left in inappropriate places and inappropriate positions. We think, I personally think it isn't going to be a matter of just driving home some behavioral change for the riders. And so I want to give the company another chance here to see if they can make that behavioral change with their ridership. I'm baffled by why normal bike riders anywhere else with your own personal bike, you don't think of just leaving it in the sidewalk or flopping it down somewhere. I think we can get to that point where the riders under this program should be able to do the same thing. But we're here in partnership with the city to make this program work one way or another. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. John, before you leave, this, bikes on a campus, bikes in a campus community. I mean, this just seems to be something that we would expect, we would want in a university community like this, is it not?
I would agree. I think it's a very eco-friendly sort of option you want in communities. As students come, they want to be environmentally friendly, even though a lot of our campus commuters are students that commute to the campus in one way or another, but they want those options to be out and go exercise or go commute in a more environmentally friendly way. And so the bike share program gives them that option, and they're looking for options to be more environmentally friendly.
And we've talked about, you know, wanting more students to come downtown and to return home. This, to me, seems to be something where we could incentivize students to come downtown, whether that be a coupon for Coke or whatever, you know what I mean? whether that be a coupon for Coke or whatever, you know what I mean? My wheels are, my bicycle wheels are turning here. And so, yeah, I, I was encouraged, and it looks like the numbers are such that they make some sense for us. So, anyway, having said that, let me turn it over to anyone who would like to make a few comments or questions. Alderman Fanouk.
John, come in. I'm really excited to see the program expanding, though I do have a question. We talked about wanting to bring people downtown, but I see most of downtown is not included in the proposed expanded area that's in the backup material. If somebody'd like to comment on that.
We did not include the downtown area in that first expanded area, but we would include it in the next expansion, and specifically around the bike racks that are on Lincoln Highway, and a couple of those on Locust Street. And I think there's a couple on Second Street as well. So, those would be the geo-fenced areas where riders could properly put their bikes there and end their trip by putting the bike within those areas. So, yes, we are looking at that as the next phase.
Okay, so, but why wasn't it included now? I mean, we're only talking about another three blocks over.
That was a part of our agreement, and we haven't formalized the agreement between Via Ride and the city as of yet.
All right, thank you.
Further comments? Alderman Noriko.
I'd like to clarify a point. Once a rider finishes their ride, they can park the bike either in a designated bike rack or in a designated area. Okay. And did you, were there any instances of injuries that you had to deal with? Oh, good, good. And I heard from a number of residents from the Elwood area, and concerned about, you know, bikes being left. Did your statistics show that that was one of the areas that was kind of problematic because it is a residential area?
Yeah, we can, yes, we can take a look at the heat map. So, this is the complete heat map with the data since we operated at the end of April. So, you can see here, the, the red area representing the night eighty percent of the rides, where they end or pick up. And the orange area representing fifteen percent of the rides, and the green area is less than five percent. So, yeah, that's it. So, as you can see, as you can tell, like ninety percent of the rides taken place or getting like ended on campus.
Okay.
And frankly, if, if you're going to have a problem here in the early stages of this program, it would be in that Elwood neighborhood, right next to the campus. Alderman Fagan.
If my memory is correct, when they first came in, they said that they were going to have somebody out here working, and they were going to do that. My question is, if you've got somebody out there working, and I've seen bicycles sitting around for three or four days, that they're not being picked up or whatever, and that, I think that's the concern that a lot of citizens have. If we've got people out here that are employed by, by your company, and these bikes are laying around, I understand they can't get them all in one day. But why is it taking three to four days to get these bikes off the?
So, first of all, we do have employees here. At the first three months, since we have only a hundred bikes, we have two part-time employee taking shifts. And then in, beginning in September, we have full-time employee plus part-time techs working out, and we do have like operation schedule, which is separated by zone and by time. And we said, if a bike wasn't picked out since, I, I couldn't argue that, and sometimes things happen, and it's our fault, and we need to emphasize that with our operation. Another point is that, one, so for example, a bike is been there for two days, and sometimes we're seeing riders using it and returning back to the same area. So, our operation team, they have the decision to make whether they need to rebalance it out or not, because they're afraid that they will take other persons' commuting tool out of the area.
I understand that, but the, that was one of the things that was brought up that, I mean, I'm on the south side of DeKalb, that's my ward, and I've seen a bike down at the corner of Fourth and Taylor, you know, for about four or five days. So, I mean, it's, it's questionable. I mean, it's, it's a question we have to bring up, and, you know, and like you said, I mean, that's one of the problems that you have, the people just leaving the bikes left in a field or whatever. But I, I thought we were told that there would be somebody out there picking up these bikes and being taken care of in a properly manner.
So, there has been some turnover with the Via Ride employees. And so, that's part of the rationale or the, the reasoning for putting provisions for city to go out and pick them up and be reimbursed in our licensing agreement. Okay? So, if Via Ride cannot get to them because their latest technician quit, and they haven't hired a new one yet, we do have the option of going out and picking them up and then charging Via Ride for that. That's part of what we're talking about in the agreement. Another aspect of that is getting better information about the number of hours that the technicians are available, so that we can see that on a week-to-week basis. We did not require that yet, but we're, we're talking about requiring that information to make sure that we have, you know, a minimal number of hours that their technicians are available. So, those are some of the lessons learned on the university and the city's part, and in our agreement, we'll address those issues.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of Candace, John, or Tim? I commend the presentations tonight. I personally think that this is a program that perhaps has gotten off to a start with a few more glitches than what we had hoped, but, you know, I would hope that we can work with Via Ride, work with our Public Works Department, work with the university, and continue to roll, roll this out in a, in a positive way. And so, with that, I would ask if there are any final comments.
I would agree, Mayor, and knowing that we're coming into the winter, we have a couple of months here to make some this season's adjustments and be prepared for coming into the spring with some of these lessons learned and some new programs to address them.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to hear more about the Via Ride Bike Sharing Program update. That is our only agenda on our Committee of the Whole meeting. We will have a City Council meeting, which will begin promptly at six o'clock. For this Committee of the Whole meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko and seconded by Alderman Fagan that we adjourn this meeting of the Committee of the Whole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. John, before you leave, this, bikes on a campus, bikes in a campus community.